For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Hi Marty, how are you tonight?
Just fine.
Well, glad to hear it. As normal, we open up the meetings every time with a window of opportunity for anybody's got anything that's not on the agenda. I can say no, uh, no, uh, answers will be given, but we will listen. If you have a comment or question, then go ahead and Marty, clear it up.
I've got two items here. At one of your previous meetings, you asked me about information about bicentennial events that were going to take place. And we had quit meeting as a group during the festival season and for all purposes, that festival season is now completed. So we're starting again. We're having two meetings in September. And one will be on September seventeenth at twelve noon. The other one is going to be September twenty-sixth at five fifteen. We're going to go with the same agenda on both. What we're trying to do is get all the groups that have come to meetings to bring their ideas. And we're going to try and work up some solid information about each of them. And attempt to get them all on a schedule so that we can properly publicize them and, and let people know what's going to happen in 2020 for our bicentennial. Both of these meetings will be at the Scottsburg Depot. And of course, Mike Chesser, who could not be here tonight, um, will be spearheading that. And then the second item, uh, just for your information, uh, at the Scottsburg City Council meeting last night, they have, they are going to observe Halloween on October thirty-first, which is that Thursday night. And their hours will be six to eight thirty. I know that the county usually goes six to eight. And, um, Scottsburg Main Street is going to have the haunted downtown again, and we're going to go six to eight to allow people that extra half hour to get home, et cetera.
So, uh, even though the city's six to eight thirty, if you're gonna, the downtown's gonna be six to eight?
Right.
Okay.
I don't think we'll have any problem because unfortunately, there's so many people that take advantage of that event. We had about fifteen hundred last year. Everybody ran out of candy by eight.
True.
Is that on Thursday night?
At Thursday night, which is a good night, you know? And, you know, last year, we had bad weather, so it got switched to another evening. That's fine. If that happens again, you know, we can switch to another evening, but for now, it's Thursday thirty-first.
So is Main Street, are they the ones that run this highway down the square?
Oh, yes.
Can, making a suggestion, because I've been out there every year with fire department. Can they go to the city and have them shut down some roads so that people aren't?
We would really like to see at least Wardell shut down. Uh, it would be more advantageous if we had all three, you know, uh, First Street, Wardell, and Main Street shut down. Which, the fire department-
We shut, we shut.
Yeah, you shut down. Yeah, you shut, you shut down South Main, so, and that's great. But we are going to have either Young Marines or, um, uh, the group that Greg Ramoni leads, assisting people with crossing fifty-six, because that's always the problem.
I just know there's a lot of traffic.
There is a lot of traffic.
And somebody's gonna get hit on these days.
I know. I agree. We'll, we'll try for that and see if the-
I'm sure they shut them down for car shows?
Yeah.
I'm sure they'll shut them down for that.
Yeah. So she's got thousands of children that seem to be around. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Martin? I have two things.
Okay.
First of all, we have an RDA meeting Friday in Salem at ten thirty. You all are invited as usual. Second thing is, uh, an admis here, who's president of River Hills. As you're appointing on River Hills, I'd like to give you an update, of course. Uh, our executive director is resigning as of September thirtieth. Jill St. Yesford, uh, and it's nothing, I mean, she's been there for twenty-five years and, uh, she's gonna be sorely missed, but it's nothing that we as a board have done or we haven't made her mad and run her off, but we're trying to keep her, but she's, uh, just reached a point in her life where she wants to do something else. And, uh, so Nick, they're carrying on, they will be, but we're in the process, the executive board, of meeting and trying to find, well, spell out what we want in a, in a, in the new director and, and get a proposal out. And so if you know of anybody that's interested, uh, we'd be willing to entertain any kind and all, all people. But that, her, uh, her resignation effective September thirtieth. We've had one executive board meeting, uh, we have another one coming up this Thursday, I think. No, the seventeen, next week. And, uh, we're trying to hammer out a, uh, a proposal to, uh, hire a new, new person. So, uh, it's been tough. We had a meeting the other day. It's kind of emotional because after twenty-five years, she has gotten to know a lot of people and, uh, around our five county area and, uh, she's done an excellent job. And you were at the, uh, you two, you were at the dinner and you heard a lot of, uh, good things said about, uh, Jill and the work that River Hills does, and we want to continue that, so. We're on a, a mission now to try and replace an Adam. We roped him into kind of, uh, taking, uh, a little bit of leadership, a lot of leadership while, uh, there's an interim between, uh, the thirtieth and whenever we hire. We're trying to expedite that process, but, uh, we don't know what we're getting into, so. Uh, but I did want to let you know that that has occurred yet.
Where do you meet in Salem? Where do you meet in Salem?
Oh, at the, at the Michigan, at, at the, uh-
Courthouse.
Courthouse.
Well, I appreciate you taking us on Adam, and she will be missed. She's helped us a bunch and always been a go-to person, so. Wish her well for new endeavors, but again, she will be missed. All right, we'll move into the agenda if nobody has anything else. First thing on the agenda is the IU physician service contract amendment with River Hills. Take a seat, buddy.
I'm all right.
Good.
Did you give them a copy of this? This is the, um, it's an amendment between IU Health and County, uh, just extending the work for another two years. We must look over it.
Yeah, you guys can get that, so, you know, uh, let's look over it. And it is, it's, uh, to extend it for two more years, correct? Because she's twenty-two on that.
And they have the working and, um, um, but it's just documentation.
Okay. Got her motion to accept this amendment to, uh, this contract of IU Health Dobbs for the next two years?
I'll make the announcement.
Thank you. And I'll make the announcement. And, uh, we should talk to you in the lead.
Long you and I will be updating on the Life Spring CAG facility out in Austin. We're prepared, we received documents tonight from the state so we can request a release of funds from the state for that project. So I'll have the contractor prepare a, a contract for, uh, for you all to look over and approve at the next, once we get the release of funds from the state. If it's not at the next meeting, I will be at the next meeting to ask that, um, to approve that outside of, of meeting.
So?
They're, they're kind of want to get that going.
Yeah, uh, so do you anticipate the state releasing the funds?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a process.
Okay. All right, uh, extension of leave of absence of a paramedic, also leave of master training officer job description revision. How are you, Tyler?
Fantastic, Neil.
It is, isn't it?
No, no, you're fine, you're fine. Did you get a copy of this yet? That's in the waist.
No, I didn't.
It's not colored, but if you need it. Here for today, to try to extend the paramedic Gideon's leave of absence. Um, I don't know if you're aware of how it happened. He tried to relieve his youth, uh, had his coronary accident and fractured the femur, uh, on one leg and his tibia on the other. He's been off for a while. Uh, he recently got released to come back to, not come back, but released to light duty stuff. Uh, obviously, we don't have that here. Uh, so we're making progress, oh, he's making progress, I should say, and now he's starting physical therapy. He's a good employee, never been in trouble. He's obviously a paramedic for our county. So once you have him, you want to kind of hang on, so I'm just kind of be here for him, uh, in the situation, so.
May I have a go-lap from, um, extended leave? F, the FMLA period has expired and obviously he has.
Why do you have a question? I mean, uh, do you have white duty work out there?
Um, we kind of talked today, um, not really. I mean, it's simply, it's-
I mean, what's it, uh, why, we don't even get into what your instructions are, but, uh, okay, we do have white duty though, I mean, within-
Over the years, I've been, I've never seen somebody come in for white duty work out of human, so I don't know.
Well, I mean, different departments have different, I mean, and it, it will work for some and it won't work for others, so, so yeah, you, if you don't have forty hours of-
Yeah, we're definitely not forty hours of white duty work, so. Yeah.
Speak for that part, yeah. So as far as extending it, I mean, can we do that?
It's in the handbook. Um, if the FMLA period has expired and he's just a couple of ways, a couple of weeks, I should say, away from probably being released to full duty, that it's customary a lot of times for this board to approve. It's up to, uh, four weeks at a time, um, and they can ask for that. Um, and if in two weeks he's not released-
We can reevaluate.
He'll, you'll have, he'll have to come back to the board to ask for another extension if that's possible.
So he has to be for four weeks?
It's, it's, he's not really giving a specific, my phone's out of the park, because he gave me kind of a rundown.
I think he's going to be reevaluated in the next two weeks for, um, his release to-
Is there a return date? Like, I filed an appointment on that paper to return on?
Nine nineteen. So he's got about two more weeks left.
So does he have any time time or anything, or is he, or is this a situation where we're just holding his job?
It's just holding his job.
I mean, he's not, there's not any funds being paid out, there's-
No, he, it was off-duty thing, obviously, uh, so it's just to maintain his position at Scott County, I'm fine with that.
And that's, uh, the nineteenth, he goes back to the doctor, you say, and that's, that's the day after we are next meeting? So, I mean, I would, I'd suggest, again, I was, yeah, I would, I would suggest that we give him four weeks and sit with him, give him back, we love him.
Yeah.
I mean, you say he's a good employee.
He, he's a good employee.
There's not much of a skateboarder.
There's not, I know he's trying to relieve his youth from, go before going to army, but I was like, whatever.
Let me tell you, we all still think up here that we can do it, but it don't hold up. Yeah, only myself, so, uh, I remember having motions to allow four weeks. I might guess unanimous, and, uh, hopefully gets along with his physical therapy and getting back to work.
I need him back.
Yeah.
I need a paramedic back.
And then your next thing up is EMS officer training, uh, description revision, uh.
We have a job description. Um, Raymond Jones has been, um, obviously the spokesperson for the Oversight Committee. And in your packet, you should have a letter from Raymond on the top.
Yeah, we met last week, kind of an emergency, when I say we, the EMS Oversight Committee, to review it. Any changes or anything we didn't like or kind of wanted to reword or send back to her. That way we get it front of you for this meeting. That way then we can, uh, once you approve, then it goes to the council. And then so forth, before we start advertising, before we can get, uh, a replacement in there for the training officer.
And the highlighted areas in the job description that's underneath the letter, um, this job was also taken to exempt status. Prior to this, um, revision, it was, um, non-exempt, but this is a salary slash delay terms, but an exempt position, so it wouldn't, no overtime, no comp time with this position. Um, it's going to be re-titled according to what the Oversight-
Yeah, because the reason, originally, originally they had it called Program Director slash Training-
EMS Training Institute.
Yeah, and I kind of, it could be taken either or, kind of with that, with that, with that slash in there. So they kind of made the motion to go ahead and re, and reword it toward the understandable and want to get confused people.
So it'll now be known as the EMS Training Institute Program Director instead of Training Officer.
So that says it's still non-exempt or exempt?
It, this, it was non-exempt, but now it's going to be classified exempt because Irwin's office had to run it through the test to see if it could be classified exempt and put the duties in here. It ended up being an exempt position due to, um, the-
The qualifications.
Qualifications, because they have certain criteria.
The duties that was in there met their status to become a salary for-
An exempt position. So the, the highlighted areas are the things that are the major changes with that job description. They, they took the responsibility, which is the, like, next to last page, and really, I think the majority of changes came in this section.
Yeah, I think they just put some of the change in the little terms in there, turning the original.
And then there's a little short sheet that's, um, short to me, but it's just got a little tiny blurb on it. And that's, uh, Wyman Irwin, and she needs recommendation for the salary range for this revised job description. Which council hasn't seen this yet, and they will be at their tenth meeting.
Where are you at? There you go, Sam.
I'm the last caller.
Very last page.
Full page.
Right there. Full page, but it's short. It's just a short section.
I was looking for a little piece of paper.
Mine's a lot, mine's a lot, yeah, mine's a lot.
Yeah, that's, that's the same thing. I just, yeah, yours is on a full sheet.
I, I just see it, it works, that you had enough.
Yeah, and I highlighted the salary right there.
Okay, okay.
You had that very fish.
Yeah. Well, where's that?
Yeah, I tripped it, yes.
I have a question. Um, what's the, what's the salary for the Assistant Director now?
In my office, I didn't, I, I mean, I'm not off the top of my head, I don't have that salary.
I guess my question is, is this a, is this a position that could be incorporated with the Deputy or Director and slash Training Director could be one of the same?
That, that came up in, in the meeting, uh, but essentially those are two, could be potentially two full-time jobs that, that you're trying to combine into one. Uh, there would definitely be time management, how many of that, as far as figuring out what days you need to work on training, then what days you need to work on operation stuff.
But is now, is the Director or the Deputy Director now still running trucks?
Mm-hmm.
So if you take that person off the truck and put them in a full-time position, uh, Training Officer and Deputy Director, would it not work out that way?
It's working as far as-
Well, you're taking them off the truck, so they're not on a truck.
Right.
They're, they're working two, the two-
They're working two full-time jobs.
They're working two positions as a one full-time person.
You, I'd have to look at really the way the pros and cons of that, uh, because essentially the county would have to approve to combine those two.
That's true.
And, uh, you know, it's whether the, if they want, if they want to do it. Um, because Devon had expressed interest in doing the Training Officer spot. But, uh, Crossville and all was talking to me, like, if that was to happen, uh, you know, and she accepted the position of Training Officer, she did get that. And therefore, she's no longer the Deputy Director and the county did not approve to merge the two, then she's kind of stuck. Or we're stuck, but she's got the job of the Training Officer, no longer a paramedic on the truck or working the street. She's now solely the pair of Training Officer. So you just have to kind of weigh it out of the pros and cons.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is-
Is the, is the Deputy Director position, is that exempt or non-exempt?
It's, it's-
Non-exempt. Yeah, because they still work their twenty-four, forty-eight hour rotation shifts.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, you're paying for that position, plus she's on a truck.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if you take her off the truck, make-
Make it an exempt to-
Make, make the Deputy, make that a sour position, and they can be the Training Officer plus your backup.
Well, I guess my question is, that is, is, if you are working a truck, a paramedic, I'm saying, you're probably gonna make more money doing that than you are in Deputy Director, though, correct?
She's not a paramedic, though, she's-
Yeah, when I, when I, when I agreed to step up, uh, eight and eighteen to take the interim spot, I sort of, I sort of take that.
So I, I, that would be detrimental to-
Oh, yeah, you, you feel it. You feel it.
Would be, my only concern there would be the fact that, you know, you may have, you may have a couple of people on somebody that's, that's-
Right, and that's why I say if somebody's wanting to do that-
Not unless you don't realign the salaries.
Yeah, but I mean, we're, in that case, you would be eliminated position, and so you're, you'd be able to pay that salary. And so right now, that's-
Yeah, in a sense, yeah, but then if you're pulling her off the truck, you gotta have somebody to replace her. Plus her, so then you, because I thought about that, you know, you're saving money, but then, okay, well, I got a replacement, so now the money's saving. Combine the two, now I'm paying out, I mean, somebody else's wages and insurance and stuff like that, so it kind of washes out and it's hits. So, I mean, I can say, you just really have to sit down and look at the really pros and cons of doing that in, in the best interest.
Yeah.
And you, uh, you can look this over and-
Yeah, we've looked, we've had two or three meetings over this and we've looked at, and we actually, we went through that line by line in one EMS Oversight meeting. And essentially, they were going to do that with all the job descriptions for us, all the way from behind, even though recently down there, we looked at it again, all the way to Administrative Assistant, down to the ENT, so.
I know, I know, Mr. Jones, does he, uh, get anything to do with it? He's pretty thorough about looking at this.
Oh, yeah, he, he found the little details from the Crossville deal.
I was just looking here, it's asking for a request for a pay increase. Now, of course, I don't know what that salary is, but I know what, uh, been recommended here, is that?
It's forty. That, I, I can tell you that position, because that was just recently established within the past two years, and that was not even thing. But the limit is two forty, and I was a week at forty thousand dollars.
So if we pass this, you'll probably go on to council and ask for a pay raise, if that's correct?
It was budgeted for fifty thousand for next year, twenty-one.
It was already budgeted.
It already put in.
No, no, this is still, that's the, that's yet to be determined, because this is the new recommendation based on the new job description that Kent Irwin office said that he would need to compensate the person between the forty-two and fifty-three for that position. And based upon what council, but they'll, like, the plan was with Raymond when he discussed it with me to take it to council. They went, okay, we'll give you this range, and then whenever they offer the person before they do the conditional offer of employment, based on that person's criteria and their qualifications, then ask for council to approve a particular salary for that individual based on their merits. Um, then before they would actually-
Yeah, that's what we talked about, that you're sharing, you can do.
That's just the range that council should want within.
I'd actually like to look at this a little bit for, unless you guys want to vote, I'd, I'd rather not vote, if I can read some of this. Talk to, talk to somebody, talk to a couple of people. I'd like to know the difference, especially if combining them or not combining them, and, uh, so, it's my preference.
You're okay with that, John?
You're in a rush?
We'll come back.
Do we, like, something's gotta be done?
No, I mean, not really. I just like, uh, I mean, personally, I need somebody in there, because all last, all last week, I was teaching a class. So it's just me personally, but there's no particular question.
Council's the tenth. That's remaining.
If you guys, if your old, if he has one table, then, then so be it. How much your old stretch is?
I'll wait.
That's, that's on me.
Never worth a second, bro.
By any senses, they say that, uh, we'll look at it to the eighteenth, put it back on the agenda for the eighteenth. If we have more time to look at this.
All right.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for all of you.
Chairman, how are you?
All right. Boltman Road Ditch, Art No.
Famous ditch, right?
Come on up, Art. I beg, you can come too. Okay.
To start with.
To start with, listen to that, Mike.
To start with.
Mr. Todd? You want to talk about the ditch?
I would love to, guys. Um, John, you said ditch. I really want to thank you for talking to me and coming out. And I've actually done this years ago, at least you said, we thought we'd say, talk about this together, you just saw. And I appreciate that, but the outcome is. I know you can't, you saw it. I've always got a problem there. Mike, if I hadn't seen it, oh, hang on. And Jill and Chad have seen it. It, it actually started, the last month, there was a push mower, or a back, a slip and slide.
Yeah.
That was forcibly, now these are willing to push mower, riding lawnmower, um, up till, uh, about two thousand and twelve. And that's when the ditch was dug out. I, I still look, it wasn't washed out then, but it started washing out in thirteen. It's got progressively worse ever since. Wasn't that big of a deal back then, there was a field there. But then I've got a house building right in front of it, and it's just washed out, so that ditch is two and a half feet wide or two and a half feet deep. It's not safe to even try to maintain, take care of. I can't walk anymore. Peggy doesn't want to eat here. And if they go up there by and watch nipples, this is the next grocery, this is just a rubber ditch right there, after road, there is no ditch through, there's some flashing. I've got several explorers look at it. I want you to fix the ditch. I know you guys got the equipment, you dig ditches all day long. I used to go see you go digging this someplace, but dirt back in there.
I'm a little confused, Art. Help me out here.
What's that?
Because I think I know what we're doing here, but it's been too much. But, uh, I thought you wanted to kind of fill the ditch, but different, had a different method to fill it?
I would have jumped to rip wrap the ends of the ditch, put this back in the dirt. And then at my own expense, I would go out and buy the netting and the straw blanket to get the grass seed to hold. Uh, there, there's, you talk about that. People say that won't work, it won't hold. They want rip wrapping. I guess rip wrapping's better than nothing, but still, I don't, because we want rip wrapping for the house.
Yeah. Uh, I did talk to, uh, Helen a little bit, and he, only he told me to stick, if you wanted to cut. He said you want to be able to mow it. Maybe, uh, tell me if I'm telling wrong, you know, you get this second hand sometimes. But he thought maybe you could level your ditch out and then rip wrap up on the edge and then you can mow up to the ditch, but I don't know if that helps any.
Well, I was here, you know, and to me, what I used to kind of interpret that to be, John, that maybe it's more different, thicker than what we got now. I, I want to pull, because on my side of the ditch, I'm probably a good foot, foot and a half higher than a ditch. I would pull that dirt back and shake my yard, but I never had any intention of going to fill the, the, eliminating the ditch. But still, if I pull that dirt back, we're still got a two and a half foot ditch, or two, I like to not put the dirt back in there.
Yeah.
We still have a foot, a foot of ditch for water going down.
Everything I've been getting so far, and, and I think I've got it right, but I get a little confused with this sometimes, but everything we've looked at so far was going, we've already got a problem, and I've told you this, I'm more, I'm just as much concerned about how much water goes across the road. And I've been very concerned, we've done hydraulics and all that kind of stuff, that whatever we do, if we're not careful, we'll create more water on the other side. And I want to help, but I don't want to make it worse on the other side to help you, or help your side. And I just haven't come up with a formula yet to get this done. And I'm listening, I've talked to everybody I could about it, but I don't know where to go with that, I really don't. I know what you told me, I haven't come up with any way I can make that work. So, I mean, my ears are open, and there are people that are not longer there, they have ideas I'm willing to listen, but I just haven't come up with anything.
Right. Well, I've got water coming down from a little your road, there's probably, what, two thousand foot of ditch coming down there to me. I'm three hundred fifty foot. I, I can't, I would impact any at all, if I don't try to make it better, because, John, like you say, there's a huge problem across the road. And I've got some people to show you of water across the road, well, water might actually come from the road by a couple inches and go ahead and spray rates. And I don't want to hold over there. I don't like giving any of that. I mean, there you have beneath it all to impact that property.
But we've looked at ideas and maybe run on the other, once you get to the other side of the road, and then bring it back, but in the long run, that didn't help you. I mean, it might have made-
Where, where, where does the water run all the way across? So it crosses the road?
Right in front of these old paths. It crosses over.
And then?
And right over in those houses on that side. And right over in those houses on that side, and right down the ditch, what was it?
And then comes back under the road?
Yes.
No.
Yes, back under the road, and that's the problem right there, that's the problem, because that, all these people are acting like they're devil or some chicken. And a lot of people look at me, telling me I'm crazy, and it's much younger than I am, but, you know, there is a retention pond back there, and back in the seventies, back about the time they put St. Fort water in. They put that, they dug all that out, they put a retention pond in, and that water becomes, it's down in the ditches, it's, it's problem, I'm saying, hit that retention pond, and there was some release, so devil, devil whistle was in the back. And the pond's still there, I'll trip to anybody, who's, it's about that now.
Who, whose retention pond is that?
I got no idea.
Is that, is that St. Fort?
I, 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 I don't think St. Fort was with that either.
Is that north of?
They're like, see, they did it, my, right, the very northwest corner of my property is where it's at, it basically, the most of that, like, trust.
Behind that trailer?
Yes.
Well, that culvert, where it comes back across the road, is right there at that trailer, right there at their drive.
Yes, that, that was all designed, foot to right there, and doing, I'm not kidding you, that'd be a long time, that's fifty years ago.
Yeah. Some girl ran off the road right there to, in that ditch.
Yes, yeah.
I don't know.
I don't understand the situation, I, I, and I, I just need help, I'm in.
Yeah. So what's the soli, I guess, I've, I've looked at, and I mean, what, in your opinion, what's the solution?
In my, in my opinion, Mike, I'm the only one that the ditch is roared on, I know what happened, I know it's gray area, those people have gone, it wasn't probably before then. And now this here, I think we can rip wrap the ends, you know, put some dirt back in it, and he went nuts, and he said last week, he says, put, we dig ditches all day long, put dirt back in the ditch, put back in, net it, straw blanket, grow grass, and pond salt, and how it would have impacted any of any, and they were still watering them, I flagged it out, and the rent up slowed down a bit.
Work, yep, you wanted to rip wrap right in the, in the.
It's here, it's here, it's in my property, right, right, right after Gary Austin, right, as he's coming to me, and right as you leave me, we go into my old house. That's what I think.
No, no, you want me to visit.
Guess we shouldn't do that.
Or you want me to go full G I S.
No, uh, what I, what I've seen, and, and the ditch is cut that down, and what you explained to me was, is you want to basically make it wider by taking some of that yard back into your yard, put slope on it, and then.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Take the grain off of it.
Show the water down.
Down in the bottom, there's about, probably, uh, what I looked at was probably eight inch, six, eight inches in the bottom, where it's continuing to cut, to, to fill that in, and put the rip wrap in the ditch, and then put the straw blanket over it, and get it to see, right?
Yes.
That's what I understood.
You don't want to fill the ditch?
No, more than.
So, it would still have, and, and to his, I think what I understood is, is, yes, but the ditch is now, actually probably going to be wider at the top than what it is right now with the slope.
Sure.
And, and as far as the swag, I think you're going to have probably, what I understood of it, would be about the same depth. So I don't know that it would impede or put, I don't know that, I think that's reasonable, whoever, but I know that if he bumps him, or whoever he's talking to, and, and them guys know a lot more than I do on that, but I think it would, is, but you never did, to me, say you want to fill the ditch.
No, no, no.
So that's where we're at.
So if you're taking some of the hill off the gray, I mean, that, you could just, could you not just pull that down the ditch and make your ditch, you know, you're saying it's two and a half foot deep now, I mean, if you're going to take that hill off and, and make it more of a gray or a slope into the ditch, I mean, there's dirt, I mean, we're done pulling it into the ditch, and then put the rip wrap on top of it.
Well, I, I pushed that dirt down there, but I actually, these are my yards, but it's a question, I thought, if you guys did dig that for all the county, just fill up right in that ditch and level it out now, and I, I put the blanket down and the netting, I'd be all the way anywhere, I'd keep dirt smooth with it. And so not with it.
Come on up there, I need, I need help. Anything we put in the ditch, hang on, come on up there, come on up.
These guys know what the ditch.
Anything we put in the ditch, hang on, wait, wait, anything that we're going to put in the ditch, no matter where it's at right now, because it keeps washing out, because there's no drainage on the same side of the road. The house that he used to own has no ditch, has no driveway culvert.
Right.
That's where the main problem lies, so if I fill any of that ditch in, then that causes more water to go across the road, which in turn, the lady across the street there, her whole house, I mean, potentially, it'd be the water go up to her house, it's already covering her whole backyard.
Always been my concern. If I'm getting right, you're talking about leveling your side down.
Mm-hmm.
And filling that in with some rip wrap.
Don't, I'm not letting the ditch, I'm just, I'm just saying, let's tune that foot ditch out, I'm going to put like that about ditch, about foot, about foot deep, probably she be. I don't know, I'm going to widen it out.
You're going to widen the ditch on your side.
He's going to level it off on one side to be able to mow that one side, right, close to your house.
I actually, I'm more difficult.
Right, okay, well, anything, if we fill that ditch in more than what it is right now, then that potentially puts more water across the road, and we can't put a bigger pipe to take all that water, because that, it does the same thing. But whenever it gets to the pipe that was, that goes across the road.
Yeah, I get that.
Then the water, if we have really heavy rains, there's not, there's no drainage there.
Where I'm trying to figure out, is, if he going back on this side, and he levels it down, how does that create more water?
Exactly.
On that, hang on. Torrential waters, the water's still going through that one pipe, so all that water's still going right through that one pipe that can't take all of the water. No matter if you take the whole bank off, period, I mean, there's still, there's not enough drainage there for that pipe to take all that water, it's just not big enough, and if we put a bigger one in there, and then it's doing the same thing. It's still putting too much water on the other side of the road. Because when we have a really bad rain, it goes, literally, you can just drive right, right down the road, and the water's going over the road, and the lady, and I think it's in the trailer, she sits there, it's, it goes, it's probably twenty foot from her house, doesn't it? Gets down, it's really, her whole, she can't even get out the driveway, I think.
She's down the whole thing, right?
I think all that ditch and her ditch up, people, but, but because she's already.
But I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand, and, and I'm getting, trying to get this in my head here, we've got water on the west side of the road that goes basically to the north, and goes east, under the road, back north, to a ditch that goes back to the west, is that correct?
Yes, yes, Mike.
Because there's no ditch in front of the other house, or they drive.
But then, then I guess my choice would be there, have we talked to them about putting something in there?
We had talked to him before, and then I don't know who bought it or whatever, we can talk to them about, but that would literally pretty much take, take front of the side of their house off, the house is right there on the side of the road, so, I mean, I haven't talked to them about it, but they have a concrete driveway, we'd have to cut through the concrete driveway with the culvert in, and everything like that.
Bob, that, that.
That should have never been put in that way from the get-go, because there's no, that just takes away the drainage there on that side of the road.
That water coming down both the road, because of that culvert, does not do that, the main problem with today's forces, with mine and with later on salmon, is all that water that goes down this side, the old L D Joe's property, is a huge, thi, thi, this, this is really, this, somehow this is all mixed up. We got, we had a car hit this, this culvert, right when Chaz Hocker comes under the road, now, I fixed this, at my own expense, that's what I did it, you guys gave me the rock, and here's the water, here's the water, full, in a torrential rain. And here, here's the result on the other side of the road, that little twelve inch culvert, maybe ten inch culvert, that blew under the road, doesn't create all that water, here's from today's forces.
Not having a ditch on that side of the road is what causes all that water.
Me on that side?
Yeah, where the house doesn't have a ditch, nor a driveway culvert, that's where the problem was, on the east side.
No, you're talking on the west side.
You're talking about down. Yeah, right next to where he's at now.
But his hero boys.
Yeah.
Here's what he, dad, what, uh, here's, here's the water.
Well, my whole thing is, I mean, the ditch is only going to take so much water anyway, so whether it's, you know, two and a half foot deep, or a foot deep, it's only going to take so much, and then it's going to go, it's got to go somewhere else, so.
You know, Mike, I've been here a long time, I've seen that dirt come, that water come underneath that road, and follow those ditches down north, across back under, or try to cross back under, heading west, without the box.
I know where that culvert is.
Then the source water, all flooding is from the rear road drainage. There's some going towards Brian Ritchie, but the majority of it comes towards us.
I went to April Ramoni a while back, when, uh, it's been a year or so ago, when we were talking about this meeting, and, and she couldn't find the retention pond anywhere, on any kind of map, so I didn't, I, he knows where it's at, that's possible, I, I didn't see one on the maps or nothing, and she couldn't either, so.
I lived with an ass couple neighbors, and I don't doubt you, but there, there's nobody.
There's still there, it should be, Phil, come look at it.
I have neighbors in there for years.
But the water does cross back over Moon Glow Road after it goes through, going down, and it does not going to go through there very quickly, it's just kind of flat, it's just around.
Yes, I'm going to be a champ, that's probably the problem.
Back in those woods or whatever, that was something April said we had to get the property owner's permission to even get back in there and see if there's anything that, that's stopping the water, or any shore, you know, any manner like that, but. But it does not run really going back across in front of Ron's house.
Oh, terrible.
It is terrible.
And her ditch is really wide, and it still hasn't made no difference on her side, so.
And she, you know, I talked to her too, and she's like, oh, you know, it doesn't matter to me, but if it gets worse over here, then you're going, you're going to be there a lot for me, so.
I'm not surprised when Ron did what she did, that she's had results that she has, because she must have put tree bark, fire some for the deed, and that's now, because deed composed it, it's top, so obviously, I keep having a quicksand out there, but it's worked, but her ditch, her ditch stays half full, and she probably spent ten, fifteen thousand dollars.
It just runs across the road, that's why.
And it did across the road.
That's almost horrible.
See, that's what, that's what, I, I mean, I do agree there, that, uh, that water on that side of the road, I don't think it's coming from the west side, or coming from.
Well, there's water coming in the ditch down through it.
There's going to be some, yeah, there's going to be water.
So it can add to it.
Yeah, uh, I think, I, I, just my thought, I, I mean, I think we do need to look, trying to figure out how to, uh, do something with the drainage from, from this point right here. I think, if I'm not mistaken.
On the east side of what?
Right here, is this, right in here, is, I think, where that crosses the road, on the north of that.
Where that turn.
Now, to me, I think, I think, to drain this, I'm not even going to talk about his, but to drain this, I think you're going to have to go down this, down this stream right here, and find out what's, whether it's beaver dams, or whether it's just grilled up, or whatever it is, and I think you eliminate that, a lot of it right there, at least to a point where it don't stand as long.
So you guys, you figure out what it'll lead you to, if you can.
And you, yeah, that, that, you can't do what?
We can't enter that, I mean, legally, we can.
Is it, is, is that a legal drain, have we checked on that?
I mean, you both have been read the, the study, and, and both.
I don't think I have, I don't remember that.
Come on, let's have it.
Yeah, the email I received stating that, I mean, there's nothing that can be added, or changed, or anything there, or it's going to cause more water, you know, we had Civil Con do that for us.
Well, and I understand, I do not, I, we cannot, yeah, we cannot add more water to her, Indiana State law says that you cannot backwater upon a person, we all know that. But again, whether or not we change that to where, uh, it's, you know, to me, whether it's a V down like this, or if it's a U, and you've still retained the same amount of water, I think that's what we would need to know. Whether it's going to be bottom out, or whether it's going to be one of these deals where you can do something with it. Uh, but I still think the biggest problem with the water across the road is down that drainage ditch, I think that's where we're, and again, I think that would be, have to, that would take some time to.
It would take some time.
Get some access to be able to do.
It would.
And again, I think I D M, or maybe B N R would be somebody to have that permission, but I can't do anything, that's been the whole of the law.
I was going to say, we can't even touch that for a minute.
It's, uh, but, I, I think, you know, at that point, if it could be, you know, beavers, if, we run into the same thing up in the, uh, off York Road, that's our top down box, again, uh, a lot of beaver dams and things up there, and we did get clearance to knock them out, so, that's, uh, but, John, that's, that's up there on you.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I, I, all I can tell you is, I'm, I'm staying with these two, they, I think they know it better than I do, to be honest with you, and if you guys can come up with some way, I want you to, but, but you're going to have to go through them already, I'm not going to override them.
When they tell me to, where do I do?
Do what?
When they tell me to write it.
I want them to help you if they can, but they, I want to, but they're, they're going to have to work together to find a solution, I haven't figured out what it is, they haven't either. If they can come up with some way with you, I'm all for it, but.
It's good if you grow that before next year, I mean, every year, it's worse and worse and worse.
Can I say something?
Yes.
It, I mean, it's very dangerous how it is now, I cannot go out and hardly weed it, and when there's mailboxes that's fallen over in the ditches, how, I mean, how can it not be there somehow or other? You know, I'd really hate to ride the mower across there, and part of the dirt, you know, that's going to happen one day, it's going to happen.
Well, anyway, work together, I don't have a solution tonight, if they can find one, great, but if not, I'm sticking with them.
So it's seven years, I, I do thank you for bringing, to public court, I do thank you for that.
Okay. I, I want to help, I do too, but I, I ain't going, I'm not going to override people that are in charge of doing this, unless I just really come up with something that doesn't make sense to me, but I, I try to. But, I don't mean I want you to quit here.
I tell you what, if, if you have picked a contractor that you're going to use, because we've heard four names so far, so when you pick a contractor, if you'll call the garage, I'll get the person who did the water study, and you have that contractor meet us out there, and we'll all meet out there and see if we can come to something.
Jill, uh, I'd love to just stop by, it's Fred Bussel, wouldn't do that, he's too busy.
Okay.
Richard is next.
whichever one you do pick, though, because we've heard Johnson, we've heard Kevin, we've heard us.
Kevin, Kevin, Kevin told me, so, everything I've been, I've got, I cannot get to you this year, it will not happen.
Okay.
That's why Kevin's up.
Okay, royalty, we heard you called royalty, just whoever you decide.
Yeah, I did, I, now, I think I got that.
It doesn't matter.
No, whoever you decide, call, let us know, and we'll meet you out there.
If you can find a solution, you can go for it, but I'm not going to override them.
Okay.
Okay.
And I do appreciate your call, we'll meet you there.
Sorry.
All right, next up is the.
Probably get all your pictures.
You have one, you have, I, I got.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Thank you. Highway Department update.
We need to do a ratification on contract that you will count now to the garage and sign, so do you just, if this first sign in the torri, do you just need a motion, or what do you need?
Just to ratify the contract that you had previously approved yet.
On their motion to, uh, notify the contractor who previously approved, uh, for the signs, and try and opt for. Motion made by Mike, second by John, I'll make it unanimous.
And this is the plan, but each one of you need to sign, I know it's very tiny, but the names are on there, on us, can you see it?
Yeah. Say your name, care.
I can read that in person.
Holy hell.
Uh, tiny.
Yes, tiny.
Uh, the last thing is, sign that.
Sign that, that they're somewhere, yeah, yeah.
Um, I'm applying for a grant, again, with I P E T, um, last year, we were awarded nine thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars for safety equipment, and I have to come before you all for signatures, if you will allow me to, uh, apply for this grant, it's no money from us, it's just their cash.
So it's not a matching grant?
No, this is the original, I know she gave you a copy, I guess.
Okay, I guess my question is, again, on the, have you looked this over as far as, and it's okay, by state board counts?
This is our revised one.
Okay.
Yeah, but I asked for the last one.
Okay, okay.
So if you will approve it, then Bob, you sign this one, but you all have to sign this one.
Okay.
And as you can see on that, I'm asking for ninety-five hundred dollars, which the limit's ten thousand.
What kind of equipment are we talking about?
Last time, we got barricades, cones, uh, chaps.
It's not personal, and, and well, can be personal.
It can be.
All right.
I hear motion, aloud, Mike made the motion, second to John, unanimous.
And then you want to bring that to council, or you don't? Maybe, no, I'm gonna take mine out, and then it somehow didn't need the, there's the copies, so we can put it in there.
We have a paving.
Well, the board is gonna bring, is that what that team?
Yeah. Do you want to?
We have a paving.
Uh, they put the trailer together today, and are trying to finish it up, so hopefully on Monday, Tuesday, we'll move out to the next row, which row, yeah, I don't get it, so.
For your Mac back in town?
Uh, not till September sixteenth, we'll be out of the road.
All right, that's our last row, isn't it?
Yes. You guys ready with me?
Yep.
Well, you guys have been modelled today, so, after working every day?
You can trash that, but.
Learned something, I can't remember right now.
We did mow the health department, back behind the health department. We had to watch out a little bit, 'cause that was growing up way too much, but, I'm gonna try my whole.
You found it right in the ditch?
No, but it was rough, that's it. But we'll get to try it, but it'll be, have paving.
Okay, that's fine. But we're gonna keep that, 'cause I mean, we'll expect money to take that, we want that to go back up over there. Uh, and also wanna, we may hit that, uh, we may get pieces, may hit that, uh, back up there behind the health department again, after it's paving too. You know, another month, we'll back in there lots of time, but second time cleans it up a lot better. Uh, I don't know, anything else? I can't think of anything else.
Okay.
Nelson Parker.
Please pass it over to your team, please. So this, um, I'm not gonna do anything on this tonight, 'cause Bob Houston wanted to be present. Um, he's already read all this and gave me a few revisions. Uh, my health board has already approved this, so there's not a tattoo and piercing facility ordinance in the county right now. This is Indiana code, basically, but they're, it's up to your local health department to create your own ordinance and kind of enforce those codes. Um, so basically, what's gonna be personal to us is the inspections, and then the fees. So we're gonna require someone to register as a facility, so like a permit, just as you would a food establishment, and then, um, an artist or a piercer fee. So the permit fee would be a hundred dollars for the year. Um, if there is someone who owns the facility and they're the only artist in the facility, then they just pay the hundred dollars. We don't make them pay the additional fifty to be a registered artist or piercer. Um, and then if there's a temporary artist or piercer, I mean, like, somebody comes in from Crowther Hill, wants to do a tattoo at, um, a shop here local, um, it's gonna be twenty-five dollars. And there is a hundred and twenty-five percent link fee, so, and I'm wanting this to take effect, um, at the beginning of the year, next year, twenty twenty. So we have time to work on it and do our, have our reading readings, you have to be on that with Jess.
So how many people do, how many buses do we have?
Well, really, yeah, that's the only one that I know of, that's a good actual business, but this would help cut down on those people that say they have an actual shop out of their garage or whatever.
There's a bunch of those.
Exactly, exactly. We have no way of tracking those, and we have no, um.
Do those people have to have any type of certification, or they just say?
So Indiana code says they have to do, um, universal precautions training, so knowing how they can transmit disease. Um, but again, no one's coming in and checking that, because there's not any kind of ordinance that says who's gonna go in and check that, they have that documentation.
This is law, but is this, are those people grandfathered?
No.
I mean, is those are there before the law, or they have to change?
That, I mean, you could ask Bob Houston for verification, but I would say no.
Well, I'm for this, I just, I mean, I like what you're doing, but I'm curious about the people that are in there doing it, if they.
Question here, uh, as this reads tattoo and piercing facility, is that included beauty shops?
Mm-hmm, so, um, microblading, or, um, yeah, they have a, microblading is like tattoo iris.
Or, or, or.
It's a tattoo though, so a lot of shops are doing it.
When, when piercing, I mean, piercing ears?
Yeah.
So, so at that point, all the, the facilities would be.
Yeah.
Have to pay, uh, a fee to do that, correct? And again, would that be a, I don't know, and I don't know anything about this, but would that, is, is there people that's licensed that pokes you through the ear, or you just anybody shoots a hole through there? I don't know.
From reading the Indiana code, you don't have to have any kind of like certification, like you would, um, like there's not like a license like there is a hair shop, like a hairdresser.
Okay.
Um, but there is some guidelines on what kind of training and certifications you have to have, like the universal precautions, um, you have to have certain vaccinations to prevent, to protect the.
And then that's why I want to ask, do we have any problems with anybody doing that stuff?
I mean, there's been occasionally that people that will call and say, you know, so-and-so's doing a tattoo out of their house, or so-and-so, you know, but there's no way for us to really.
Do anything about it.
Do anything about it, yeah. We can just call and say, do you know, yeah, exactly, do you know that this is Indiana code, like, print it off for him, show him.
But we haven't had any reports of anybody.
Like disease being spread or anything like that, no.
I read jailhouse tattoo.
And, well. I don't think the jail will register.
I didn't ask, and if, if there's not a problem, why?
To prevent a problem, 'cause there's so many diseases that can be spread from using, um, you know, not cleaning the equipment correctly. It's like, you know, you heard.
Hepatitis C.
Hepatitis C, H I V, it's, I mean hepatitis A, 'cause it talks in here about if an artist.
It's a nurse, couldn't you?
Yeah, and if an artist is sick, they don't need to be doing that hand washing, just, it protects your people.
Okay.
And, I mean, from what we went through, it just, it's just really big.
Okay.
Then you, they, and then here, it's like, this, not even, it's like disposing of equipment, like, yeah, there's people that do it, that you have the right way to dispose of it, because then if you're just throwing it away, that puts the public at risk, possibly, like your trash guy's picking it up and getting stuff, and they don't know what, what it is, or who's, who it's been on, you know what I mean, that sort of thing.
He's an opportunity to inspect too, though.
Yeah, and keep track of who it is, or, and who's out there. Right now, we only, I only know of the one actual tattoo facility.
I'm sure there's more factors.
Yeah, and Tammy said Bob wanted to be here whenever we.
And he said he basically was totally fine with it, and he saw no problems with it, but he preferred we'd all wait till he's here to adopt.
Okay.
Do you know how many like readings we have to do and all that good stuff?
I want to say that whenever you, um, propose to adopt, that you have to have two public readings of the final draft, and then you can adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
So that, we still have time to work on that, if she wants that done by one, one of twenty.
Then I'd like to go to council to have my fees approved, is that right?
That's part of the commissioners, I think, they program fees.
Okay.
Don't you have to, uh, on the second, on the second written, you have to have a public hearing to do with that, I think.
So, and it has to be published in the newspaper, and then so many days between, and, and.
A lot of people in opposition speak.
Yeah, so hopefully, we have enough time, January first, to get all of that done. Um, and then, last but not least, obviously, I'm gonna be, uh, out of commission, I'm targeting sometime next month. Um, so Tammy just wanted me to say in a public meeting, so it's on record, that, um, I do have a stamp with my signature for claims and payroll, um, and other things that would be applied. And then she has just asked whoever uses that stamp, initial it, and ink, so we know, the state board of council knows, it's something where we pulled that, it's obviously a stamp, but it was, you know, this is the person that saved it. Um, and then I'm getting my F M L, I can figure it out, so.
I don't know if it's safe asking, I'm sure.
Yes, so, um, yeah, if you guys have any questions on the ordinance, feel free to call me, and we can, um, work it out. Everyone around us has one, so our fees are comparable to Washington, Jackson, and Jefferson County. Um, so if there's a question I can't answer, I can always call their administrator and ask how they do, you know, if it's an inspection question, or, like, with the beauty shops and stuff like that, so.
They should, they should have been expecting that anymore.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, if, if they go into another county, like if someone goes into Crowther Hill, they have to get a temporary artist permit, so it's not like we're the only one doing this in our region, we're kind of the last ones, so. And we'll personally reach out to those people who we know is gonna affect immediately, which will be right first, so they're not on side of it, and that good stuff. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Uh, next up is, uh, the second county veterans service officer position, if you got anything.
It's basically to the point there, um, I think Joe DeWitt has made contact, um, with this board at times, and maybe with the board at least, and also with the council. And council is under, um, the, I want to say, they, they agreed to fund that second position. Um, I think there's been a conversation we had several times, I think, especially between John and Joe DeWitt. And Joe has looked that John description over that we currently use for our current county veterans service officer. It would basically be creating a second one, the hours would be the same, the pay rate would be the same, we would have two, three day a week county veterans service officers, if you would approve that second position, which you would hire. Um, I believe there's talk about including Tom and Board officials at their pleasure, and Joe DeWitt, and he's, um, reached out and said that he would be glad to help you.
He knows our process.
When you hire process, because it, we need to be certified before they airs out on that Vectron or Vectrtron, or whatever that system is that they use. And, um, then council has already, for the twenty twenty budget, has already entertained the appropriation for that as well, so, and they will be willing to appropriate for the remainder of the year, once you hire somebody for that position, so, um, but it is an urgent, serious matter that we get certified.
And Joe thinks we'll be providing a lot more service to a lot more people this way, either that he doesn't, he thinks there's an outreach here that's not being got to a lot of people.
There are a lot of veterans that have not been tapped into in this county, and so the, the complimentary part of this would be that we would get someone to be in the office, or the computer, um, be certified, and then it would allow for the second one to actually go to the clinic, go to some of the, um, places they frequent, and do some outreach and try to bring in the business. When we've got somebody at home entering everything, they're, they're doing outreach, and Tom would be, end up being more of an outreach coordinator.
Yep.
So it basically is to approve the second county veterans service officer if you told us of it.
Motion?
What was the, was there, was it twenty-some hours with Mark? Was it same as the other position, the, the cost and everything?
Yeah.
It's Indian, it's twenty-one hours.
Yeah, just Mary is the other one.
Yeah.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't work the same day.
No, I mean, I.
So they're five days.
Money at a day and everything.
Same day, then we just get out of there.
And one day they overlap.
They overlap one day, and, and we thought that'd be a good day, or they did, Joe, you know, thought it'd be a good day for him to do some outreach, on the day they overlap.
Yeah, I'm good with that, so. John makes a motion, second?
I'll second.
Mike seconds, I'll make it unanimous.
Okay, that's all I need.
And thank the council for signing that second position.
That's a good thing.
Uh, it is, I think it, uh, it expedites, uh, veterans getting benefits that they're entitled to, and, uh, we'll have to do that in any way we can. I hope it, everything, so, coming to them. So again, thank you all. Uh, consideration of Dallas, nineteenth, uh, regular monthly flames, everybody had a chance to look these over?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, it's the.
Motion, second? I'll make it unanimous.
It's not over yet.
Never say. Yeah, don't change this. Uh, consideration of the minutes for August seventh.
I'll make a motion, that's second.
I'll make it unanimous, that's in a other book.
I'll go sometime around.
Okay. Payroll docket, ratifications for state board of council, are your motions to ratify the payroll?
I'll look them up.
Mike made the motion, John second, I'll make it unanimous. That's the, we're gonna wind it up. Transfer station, Midwest Environmental Services Agency there, uh, Tammy did call me yesterday, I think it was, and him was here and, and, uh, providing, had any questions right here. Uh, basically, uh, the, I guess the septic system, uh, tank needs to be pumped. Uh, my understanding that they basically pump it maybe once a year, but it could be up to twice a year, uh, because of it being a landfill, or because, I guess, of things that go down the drain out there. Uh, in Midwest Environmental Services is the only person that will touch that. Uh, irregular, uh, waste disposal people will not contact to do it, they're not interested, and, uh, right now, it's, I guess the best guess is around thirteen hundred dollars to have that pumped. Uh, again, that is something that could be, it's a thousand gallon tank, that's one of the problems, uh, but, uh, it's gonna be at least, the way others do it, thirteen hundred. And it's what they find in there, I guess, I, I'm assuming they cannot just dump that, they gotta do it in special ways of doing that, and that's what, uh, Midwest Environmental Services do, and, uh.
Is this septic?
It, it is, is, my understanding it was, wasn't it?
It's, it's a tank.
It's a tank, maybe.
That, the cir, everything runs off into and collects?
And collects, so I guess it's not really the.
Type of surface walk?
Yeah, well, I think it's, uh, from the, from the landfill and, yeah, I mean, it's just different things. And it's a tank that they have to, that we, environmentally, that, I guess I D M is, we have to have this collected, uh, a place for this to run to, and we have a tank that does, I mean, if anything, it runoff, my understanding. So I guess it wouldn't be the septic system.
But where they push the trash in, I'm sure there's water in it.
There's water.
It's kind of something, that's probably what they're talking about there.
From the dumpsters and that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, chemicals, anything that's in that, and oil, and, and any leftover, whatever.
It's kind of just hazmat holding thing.
Yeah.
Sounds like, yeah.
Catch all.
And that, right now, they, he's saying that, yeah, I think we'll just pump it like every two to three months for a while, uh, again, uh, not.
And local people won't touch it now because of the hazmat and the environmental thing, so he, he contacted the state, and they referred him to Midwest. And then, if there's solids that they find in that, when they pump that out, they'll charge an extra two and a half cents, if it's gonna be over five percent content of solids. So it's gonna be between thirteen hundred and fifteen hundred dollars probably. Tim guesses that he'll have to have it pumped, because he said it's not as much as it used to be. Um, but he thinks he's gonna have to have it pumped at least twice a year, and that, and I talked with that gentleman today, and, um, he, he thinks it'll probably take two times a year to pump everything.
So we're the solids, we're talking that like sludge?
Yes, I think so.
So at that point, I guess we, well, we have no choice. Uh, I don't have anybody else that I would know that. They're gonna, they're, so basically, I think, gonna have to be a certified company to remove that, and, uh, at that point, uh, I think we will leave the budget, try to budget it, do that, uh, budget out there for at least, you know, three thousand or something, at least three thousand a year for, for pumping that at that point, so, uh, but anyway, uh, I guess.
Is this a contract with them, or is this just a one-time service?
It's, it's a credit application, but then it also has agreement terms down here, so I figured I would, I went ahead and put my name as the signatory and then for the president of the board of commissioners, because of the agreement portion, I don't mind to set up the account.
So this is just that will, though, I mean, it's not something that...
Tim will call in for the service.
He knows it's always...
Yes.
You're right, these days, they just, uh, Midwest is the only one that'll touch anything.
And, uh, I mean, you know, it talks about some of the things that, uh, you know, that they're gonna characteristic, toxicity, uh, you know, chromium, lead, mercury, uh, you know, nickel, zinc, selenium, silver. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that could be, I mean, that they're dealing with, so they're not the ones that I know that, that... Well, I think we're just making a motion to, uh, to approve, uh, Midwest Environmental Services to pump the tank and, uh, to allow, uh, again, Tammy to, uh, sign, I guess, the, uh...
Motion or approval, or do you?
Okay, that's a motion to allow, second. And I'll make it unanimous, and, uh, you have to mention all of that.
I hear your side.
Next up is the October sixteenth meeting and proposed cancellation. That is, I think, uh, week of fall break, uh, for, I don't know, district two, I think. I will, myself, I think, gonna be out of town that week, but I don't know how many others has got anything planned that week, but, uh, I don't have a problem with it myself.
They scheduled an auditorium conference for the sixteenth and seventeenth, um, and so I, and they're gonna be at auditorium conference or out of town anyway because of the number of weeks I'm taking, actually my vacation part of that week. So, um, I'm not gonna be here, but again, I'm, I'm trying to get somebody, but my substitutes won't be here because of auditorium problems potentially, so.
We like this good count. Can we call it on that too?
Let's do, uh, here a motion.
I'll make a motion. So we moving it to a different date?
We can call a special.
It would, we need it, but not with it come back, and I'll make it unanimous. And, uh, on that note, we run all the things that was on this agenda.
Actually...
And I, I'd like to say, boy, you get that far, I'd like to say that we're just twenty minutes behind, that's, that's good for us. No, go ahead.
Well, there's two council people here, I'd, I'd like to ask a question, uh, it came up in one of our meetings, uh, it wasn't last one, last one, I think, before, about stipends. Would you, I mean, you guys have any clue how much money we budget for phones, uh, for any county people that are, are getting them?
You mean total?
Yeah, just a total.
A penny.
I'm actually about that, I pulled that after that meeting.
We've, we've had a discussion about this, and she, she had it.
Would you guys be against it, eliminating?
Did you get eliminated?
Yeah.
I really haven't.
I mean, eliminating for everybody, including the fisher, some?
Everybody, everybody.
Prosecutor, the judges.
Everybody. Everybody's phones is a one-time fee now, as Bob said before, it used to be you paid for your minutes, now you don't pay for anything, you pay one fee for everything you got, so, you know. You're, you're paying for your phone service anyway, so, you know, if your phone rings for work or rings for personal business...
Yeah, we mentioned, maybe, you know, probably...
If we don't pay for the whole thing, we just give them like a fifty dollar monthly fee.
But their fee, their bill's the same, no matter, somebody calls them from work or not.
We spend over a thousand on mobile phone services, so there's a, a little twelve thousand here.
Yeah, see Tammy mentioned, Lee, probably after you guys discussed your meeting, and I know I haven't given much thought, she was compiling this, uh, yeah, I would be, probably, too.
I mean, I, I know I have, you know, on my phone, I have unlimited minutes and unlimited talk checks, all that kind of stuff. To me, I mean, I, I'll be the first to tell you, you know, I, I don't have a problem, even just with mine, I eliminate that because my bill's gonna be the same anyway.
I have no problem with making honor either.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just, it's just, you know, I don't...
And when I say that, that's kind of off to everything, because I really haven't had an opportunity. There may be some people that work for the county that absolutely justify it.
Sure, and, and maybe not everybody has, maybe some, maybe some people still have a plan later to buy so many minutes for their phone or whatever, but I think on my part, uh, you know, uh...
Yeah, I'm the worst guy in the world at that, because I've got cell phones laying home in the drawer, hadn't been turned on probably for three weeks, five people's got none yet, so.
I'm not the person to talk to about it.
I can easily say, yeah.
But, uh, yeah, give us a call and maybe we can just look at it.
There's a few positions that they don't sit in a desk, we've got three to four rovers, that that's the only way we can get on over them most time, because they're not tied to a desk. So, but there's a few people that it's, it's part of their work requirement to have something like that, they're the first to get on them, so.
And that's kind of where we live, we, we actually, they're probably gonna sit down with a couple of us and just try to figure out who is totally justified in saying they need a county phone.
Yeah.
But there is no county phones, is there, except...
Probably the sheriff's, maybe, but they have...
Yeah, but there...
Yeah, we, we give a stock, but, but, but there may be...
We used to furnish the phones, but we ran to the fifty dollars a month to, yeah, do what was there.
Now, if there's a phone that they can have, that they would be the on-call phone, that they could have in that apartment, there would be one phone, and that would be whoever's on call to pick that phone up and take with them. And then they'd obviously know if that phone rang, they, they had an issue. There might be some situations where rather than that, they might look for a phone for an apartment to share.
The only thing I would ever see that it ever incurred a cost to anyone that has a phone and answers a phone is that if they have a pay by the minutes or a burner phone or whatever, that they go out to Walmart and buy a card for. That's the only charge that you would ever have, if you have a program with somebody, you're on, you're most of around noon, I mean, so. So, I just, I just, I knew you were both here, I just wanted to ask a question, so.
Yeah, we're gonna take it up, time after you guys decide what you want to do.
I just wanted to have a much say in the mirror, is it even, you know, worth, uh, the conversation?
Anything else on your own?
Have you casted, maybe, the judge's office, the new judge?
The magistrate's office, not this time, not this time, but, uh, still working towards that.
We, uh, and I want to, too, we got a project session meeting about courthouse security. And I don't know if I'm right or wrong or not on this, but something I'm thinking about is, should we get the magistrate done before we do anything on that? It seems like there might be, uh, some adjustments we might have to make if we put them, I mean, I don't think we're that far off, and it might give us a chance to look at maybe putting up that front end.
True.
Which I'd like to do something with the front end.
Yeah, that might...
That's gone, took a while.
Okay, I didn't, I know we talked about it, sometimes, I think people think we're gonna start moving real quick. And, uh, maybe we should, I don't know, but I think we got two projects going there and we gotta work in coordination somehow.
You could just make something temporarily in.
Yeah.
Because if you build on the front, that's gonna take a while.
Well, like I said, I'd like to have somebody professional that are capable of looking at the time before we, I don't want to put something out front there, it just makes it better coordination to courthouse.
No.
That's all.
Okay. Tammy, anything on your part? Only thing I have is, uh, I guess, again, probably, like everybody's aware, uh, so, uh, offer condolences to, uh, Mr. Houston and his family, the passing of, uh, his mother-in-law, Carol Pitts. And, uh, you know, they've been a long time business owners here in this community, and, you know, she's gonna be missed. And, uh, to the family, uh, Jack and the girls, we, uh, certainly offer a great celebration. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, the German, motion, second, let's get out of here, we're...